Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. We have a zoning board of appeals and a plan commission meeting this evening. It's the Tuesday, August 16th, 2016. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Sagabrook.
Here.
Mr. Renzi.
Here.
Mr. Minus.
Minus.
How is it?
Minus.
Mr. Heinen.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Mr. Kiefer.
Present.
I'm sorry. Chairman.
Please, please strike that from the record.
Park District, School District, Fire District, Library District.
Okay, thank you, Merrily. Do you have in your packets the meetings from the last zoning board of appeals that goes back to the date of September 15th, 2015? We'll take those first. Are there any additions or amendments to it, corrections?
Yes, I have on page two, about halfway down underneath Chairman Sokoviac, it's Commissioner Renzi, and I think it should be instead of "in it" because it makes no sense. "In" was noted. I think it's "it."
Anything else?
It's a long time ago. I think that's why.
Any other corrections? Okay, we'll accept those minutes as amended. And then we also have in your packet the plan commission meeting minutes dated July 19th, 2016. Any corrections or amendments to those? Okay, hearing none. We will accept them as presented. At this time, do we have any public comments for anything not on the agenda this evening? At this time, any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Typically, we have a development report. Jake, is there anything from the village board meeting that transpired since our last meeting?
I'm not sure. The last board meeting was, was it the rezoning for the industrial property? Was that?
It went back two weeks even, yeah.
Yeah, I believe, was there an...
It wasn't.
Okay, I believe there wasn't too much to update as far as the last agenda was concerned. And I'm not sure if you're updated on the previous rezoning request for the residential and the industrial.
Carving out of the residential and...
Right.
I don't know if you guys are updated.
We had that case.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was updated.
Recommend denial, I think, then went to the village and they...
Approved. Okay. I think that was the la, one of the last zoning cases, I think, that went to the board, as far as I know.
Okay, thank you. We have no old business for the zoning board. We'll move into new business. We have one case before us. It's case number 1730-071816.V., and it's St. Mary's Immaculate Parish, and the request is for a variance. This is a public hearing, and it's dealing with a signage. Jake, do you have a planner's report?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just interlude real quick. So, I just wanted to state for the record that I am a parishioner of St. Mary's Immaculate. I'm vice president of the men's club, and I have two children that go to St. Mary's. I just wanted to state that for the record. I don't see that as a conflict of interest because this, knowing, you know, my involvement at St. Mary's really doesn't affect the way I vote tonight.
And I also would like to point out that I'm an alumni of St. Mary's. My oldest son will be starting at St. Mary's, and I'm a parishioner of St. Mary's, so just wanted to add that in, too.
So noted for the record. Thank you. Go ahead, Jake.
Great, thank you. So, before you tonight is a sign variance requested by St. Mary's Immaculate Parish. They're seeking to construct a ground monument sign that will exceed the maximum height and maximum sign area for your electronic message board. As you can see in the sign elevation, the total height of this proposed sign is 16 feet. The total size is 60 square feet, and the sign message height is 11 feet. The 60 square feet is needing a variance as the code only allows for 48 square feet. And as you can see, the majority of the sign face area is primarily LED or electronic message center, and as code states, only 50% is maximum allowable. As you may or may not know, at St. Mary's Immaculate, there was, they had previously had a monument sign located out front in the central part of their frontage between each of their ingress and egress. Due to the Route 59 widening, that sign had to be removed. Now, because of the widening and utilities within that area, they were unable to put a new sign located in that area. It was just, it was just simply too difficult to try to maneuver within that area. And so, as a result, they have decided to locate the sign. You can kind of see the sign area in the black smudged area. It'll be located on the south, south part of their main ingress, egress, and they'll be carving out a new area with, I believe would be new curb, in order to stay out of the required, I believe, five-foot setback that is typically required for a, for a monument sign. So, they will be out of the setback, however, it will be pulling it farther away from the road, which is one of the primary reasons behind the signed variance and the requested larger sign face. Staff would like to ensure that the findings in fact are noted. The variance is in harmony with the general purpose of the intent of this code. The plight of the owner is, due to the unique circumstances and with the widening of Route 59, that did present a hardship to them as far as space is concerned. The property cannot yield a reasonable use. The signage may not be as effective if portrayed, you know, from the site constraints and the location. Because of those site constraints and location, it would be, make it a little more difficult for them to see, and it would allow them to display their messages and as a, as a larger, a larger unit and complex and in a better fashion. Staff does stay neutral in regards to their ability to operate the church and school as a whole, absence of this request. And the variance will not alter the essential character of locality. Staff has proposed the sign and feels the monument sign is of high quality and has, does reflect previous variances that have been approved by the village. As noted in the report, St. Mary's Immaculate is unique in its regard to its size. It has an excess of over 10,000 parishioners on a weekly basis, and also houses a school for students through eighth grade. Because of this large magnitude, it does present a unique characteristic to the, to the applicant. So, the motion tonight would be to adopt the findings of fact as the, of staff as the findings of fact of the zoning board of appeals and recommend approval of a variance to permit a ground monument sign of, of up to 1 feet, 4 inches, 16 feet, 4 inches in height with electronic animated sign face of up to 60 square feet in sign area for St. Mary's Immaculate Church at 15629 South Route 59. And the applicant is here for any questions of the commission.
Okay, thank you. Is someone here to represent the applicant? And if they are, could I get you to step over to this microphone here, please? If you could raise your right hand, we're gonna swear you in for your testimony. And once you do that, could you please state your name for the recording secretary? Is all the testimony you're to give tonight the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead and please state your name for the record.
Eddie Hartsell, 3207 Wild Oak Court, Joliet.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add to the planner's report or anything about this request?
I think he, he pretty much covered everything, and it, but it's a unique situation because you do have an offset. If you look at the site plan, you do have a little offset in the property there. So, we actually sit him back a little bit more than most of the signs on Route 59. And just so the board knows that we use Daktronic systems, and it has a dimming system. That is, that's our biggest complaint sometime when people see message centers or electronic signs. The sign dims down to 40% at nighttime.
Well, if you could just stay available in case...
Okay.
Have any questions or anybody else from the public? Thank you. Is there any from the audience, the public, that would like to ask any questions regarding this case? If so, please approach this microphone over here. And I'll have to also swear you in, please. So, please raise your right hand. Is all testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So, help you?
Yes.
Okay, state your name, please.
It's Patricia Child. At 15707 South Route 59. So, we own the adjacent property just south, and I was just wondering if there was a consideration to install the sign to the north end of the property. It's fairly close to our property.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, please.
The reason we couldn't go in the north end of the property, and I don't know if we can see it on the site plan, but their property line comes down and it zigzags in right here, and so it's actually closer to their parking lot than it would be, the sign would be out in their parking lot. And then it zigzags back out on the south side of the property line.
Okay, so you did consider putting it over there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question from the audience, the public? Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the commissioners. They're free to ask questions, make comments.
I would jump in because my first question is, can you explain that again? I, as to the zigzag, use, maybe if you use the big picture because I can't quite follow.
Okay. What happens, the property line, it comes down, or actually, the property line comes up here, and then when the state did it, it kind of zigzagged in this way, right on the driveway, and their property line is actually closer to the parking lot up here than it is here.
So, where on the map is this sign gonna be located?
Right here.
Okay, and so that St. Mary's property, whereas north, that same area would be IDOT property then?
Yes.
Okay.
We actually talked to IDOT and tried to get them to change it, but they wouldn't.
I just, I had one question, too, while you're up there with the map. Is, we have a recently, relatively recently installed traffic light there. Is this gonna block the sightlines on that at all?
No. You still have your 25-foot sight, sightline, your triangle?
Other commissioners?
So, is this sign actually within the parking lot right now, the drive aisle of the parking lot, or is it still, still sitting the landscaped area?
Well, we're gonna make a new landscape. We're gonna put a new curb in and make a new landscaped area.
I'm sorry, could you please stand behind the podium? We need, we can hear you fine, but it's also being broadcast, and they can't hear you at home then. Thank you.
We're gonna put, they're gonna put a new curb in and make a new landscaped area around where the sign's at.
So, the new curb that they're putting in, is that, so it's, it seems like it would be eating into that drive aisle then, right?
No, we stand over far enough to the south of the driveway. There's not, it's not eating into the driveway.
No, but into the parking lot, though. So, that north-south drive within the parking lot?
I don't believe there's any marked, there's no marked parking spots out there.
I can help out. And, and one of, one of the other reasons why we kind of looked at this spot, and we did walk the entire frontage, and obviously, their first, their first initial thought was centrally located. It makes perfect sense for them. So, yeah, we ended up coming down this way. And one of the reasons why it does work as far as the site is concerned, if you look at the two drive aisles that are located on there, they're both going east. So, it, you really only, you only need one way of direction as far as the drive aisle is concerned. You, so you only need a good, whatever, 10-foot of worth of drive aisle in order for a car to come through.
It's a 24-foot drive aisle right now.
Yeah, it wouldn't even, yeah, because you don't, you don't really even need a two-way dri, you know, driveway in that location. It's just, it's kind of access.
Right.
Where they, I think they parked, you know, some buses out there every now and then for...
I know when it gets really crowded, people.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
But it's not an actual spot, though.
So, that was one of the other reasons why it was, it was located.
So, it is encroaching into the existing drive then, right?
There will, yeah, they're gonna, so what they're gonna cut out, and I believe they're gonna create another curb area, right?
Curb area, right.
So, it'll encroach into some of that excess area in order to stay out of the setback as well.
So, if you can work with the applicant, I mean, I think we, you probably want to look at those details. You almost want to take the curb line on the south end of the entrance and have that come around and, you know, go as far as the end of that sign. So, then you don't have a condition where somebody pulls in, turns really quick, and then runs into the sign.
Right.
Because it's extruding out.
Absolutely.
So, we probably want to look at that. And then I guess, south of the sign, you could really open it, keep it open to the 24 feet then at that point, right?
Sure, I mean, you could create a bank of sort, you know, just for the sign itself if you, if you...
Maybe do some parallel parking there at that point then, or whatever, so.
I, I know that that was a concern of the church, too, was trying to take up, trying their best not to take up any parking because it is needed for them. So, they, we were certainly trying our best to try to, you know, work out the best solution we could and find us a spot for them.
So, you're saying essentially then, those last two parking lot aisles are going east. They're both, they're both oriented.
They are, yeah, yeah.
So, at that point, wouldn't it, would be worth then actually marking on the pavement that when you're, when you're coming in, it's just a right turn only that actually prevent anybody from trying to come back the other way there?
Sure, they'd...
I mean, there'd be no reason for them to because to access, I mean, if they, if they come in, they would go straight ahead.
You got the option, you got the option of going straight, turning left or turning right.
Well, they would turn, right, that's what I'm saying. They would turn right to get to either of those southern aisles, but...
Right.
There'd be no reason for anybody exiting out that way at that west end, right?
Right.
Trying to come back north along that edge aisle or...
Because you have to go, you have to go through the access drive.
Right.
On the north side of that entrance.
So, by the time you're to the next one, you're lined up on the entry. So, it seems to me, you know, painted arrow on the pavement, we're gonna make it even more clear that, you know, it's not two-way traffic in that area then. It should just really be one-way traffic.
Also, for the, maybe for the benefit of the newer commissioners, we've had some cases like this for sign variances. Typically, we receive them following the reconstruction of Route 59. 59 was elevated somewhat significantly in some, some areas. The cases that have come before us were a little further south and to the west, but this kind of fits in that area as well, so.
So, Jake, do you foresee any changes to the drainage? Will that be an issue, or is that not a problem?
No, it'll, it'll stay out of the impact of that, of that area, which is actually one of the reasons why, again, we'll pull, have to pull it back because of the utilities that are located within that area.
And I, I believe we're talking about just one and the back of the sign. So, it'd be just the front, as opposed to a sign that faces north-south. This one is just gonna be one directional sign? Is that correct? Or, so there's not gonna be a back to it? Or is there a back to it?
No, it's gonna read north-south.
Oh, read north-south?
Yes.
Viewable from both sides.
Viewable, right, two faces.
I just wonder if, you know, it seems like it's set back pretty far, and, and, you know, I've gotten a, a sign variance for a temporary sign for the men's club, and, and we probably put it, end up putting it on IDOT property, but it, you know, even at that location, it seemed like it was kind of hard to read from Route 59. I'm just wondering, is there a way we can maybe work with the applicant? Because what's controlling is, is the five-foot setback, right?
Correct. And they, and they were doing their best to try to actually stay out of that and, and not have to request a variance for it, however.
I mean, if, if they're investing this money in the sign, you know, is there a way where we can maybe get that a little bit closer to the road so it can actually be a little bit more visible? My concern is that it's almost gonna be set back too far because you look at the other signs south, I'm guessing they're probably closer to the road because of, I don't know, I don't know for sure. I don't know for sure. But my concern is if you're going northbound on Route 59, you know, with the landscaping there and all that, it almost may not be visible enough. Have you analyzed that? I mean, yeah.
We sometimes look at the issue, too, of like, this would be a destination. This, I, you know, I don't know how much traffic you're giving.
Well, my con, my concern is the message board associated with that because I know St. Mary's ends up renting those message boards a lot for whatever they're trying to promote. And those message boards are a lot closer to the road, you know, along Route 59. And my concern is if it's too far, then people can't see the message board. So, I, I'd be willing to, you know, investigate that if, if there's a way where we can, I don't know if they need to come back in front of us if they're encroaching into the setback or, or what, but I would like, if you did work with the applicant and see if there's a way we can get around that. I don't know if the commission feels the same way or not.
Well, how, how far is, I mean, so, all right, we understand north of the driveway, I mean, the, the right-of-way line increases so it's closer to the edge of their parking lot. So, south of driveway, I mean, is, is the property line a foot behind the public sidewalk? Where, where's the property line? And how far are we from there to the edge of the, the par, the parking lot?
I would say the property line's probably more near towards the, the bush line that you see.
It's about nine, I think we measured, and I think it's about nine feet behind the sidewalk.
Okay, so from that point, from the property line back to the parking lot, how many feet is it roughly?
It's because of the offset.
Okay.
And with that being said, the, the way it comes back and you got comm ed lines there, I mean, you may could gain a foot or so rather than a five foot. You may could only gain another foot or so because you have comm ed lines on.
Yeah, so you got utilities.
And those guys are very hard on sign companies anymore to try to put signs underneath their power lines.
Okay, well, I, my original question is, what, what do you estimate the distance from the lot line to the edge of your parking lot?
It'd be right at the edge of the parking lot.
What would be? The sign?
Sign, right.
So, the sign's 12 feet long, so...
Right.
With the five-foot setback, then, you should be about 17 feet from your lot line to the edge of your pavement, right?
To the backside of the sign.
Right.
Right.
So, the, basically, you're saying the backside of your sign will be roughly flushed with your, as your pavement there.
With the sidewalk, or with the pavement, yes.
Yeah, and you're just gonna create a safety zone with the curb then, yeah, that'll encroach a little bit there.
And you'll still have the site triangle as far as turning out the driveway.
Right.
And my concern is that it's almost, I mean, the, the people going southbound on Route 59 could probably read it.
Right.
Or northbound, it's like you're losing that.
Wasn't, I mean, was the original monument sign after the church was rebuilt, it was more lined up directly in line with the main church, wasn't it, the original monument sign? Before it got, I guess, taken down when they widened 59? That's right. I, I seem to recall it being kind of centered on the building, you know?
I don't know. I think they, did they take about 30 feet, 27 feet or something whenever they widened Route 59?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, so, I guess this next, the topic of movable signs or portable signs. So, if, if we grant this message center, if the village grants that, do you see a need for the church to continue to use portable message signs for events, or is this gonna be able to accommodate everything?
This will be able to accommodate everything they...
So, so we, I guess we would expect to not see portable signs in the future, then?
No, you won't see any more portable.
Okay.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Well, I have more concern than question. That, I understand the height. I'm okay with that. I was even okay before they started talking about the easement, about moving closer to the street. I am heartened that the LED dims down about 40% at night, but the 12 feet, I mean, the sign ordinance was the result of a lot of draftsmanship, and I'm not so sure we can just, like, the height makes sense because of the reconfiguring of Route 59, and so, okay, that makes sense. But to go basically 25% larger, I think that's right, a quarter, yeah, 25% larger, I'm not so sure. I mean, I understand that the church would want to get its message out, and yeah, I understand newsletters, email, and the like is probably not in the bulletin. But again, looking at churches, routinely what they put out is who their pastor is, what their hours are, and then whatever messages. So, I'm thinking that, just thinking aloud, I guess, would be that the hours are advertisement of when are their services and when are their Sunday school or whatever education programs for the children. And that tends to be something that is always on church signs. So, I'm thinking maybe the way to go is just with a 48-inch LED and take the other 12 inches and put, you know, whatever...
48 square, square feet?
I'm sorry, yes, go to 48 square feet. And then use the other 12 feet to have like the regular quote-unquote advertising for when is the education classes and that sort of thing. Because also, an LED would be about every eight seconds. And so, if we go to the commissioner's point about the weeds, or I'm sorry, the landscaping to the south, the rotation is going to be such that somebody is going to see from the south maybe one, if they're lucky, two messages that they're going to be able to read between the landscaping and the setback and being on for eight seconds. Anybody that really wants to see anything from the south really isn't going to see anything. Because also the light only happens, I believe, it triggers when there are parishioners to allow them to exit. So, really, that's not a, so much a traffic control device for Route 59, but allowing egress from St. Mary's. So, the people aren't going to be stopped in seeing the LED sign because if you're stopped for 30 to 45 seconds, you would have a rotation of six to eight of the signs, and you would be able to see everything from hours to programs to phone numbers to all sorts of things. So, just, I'm concerned that we may be setting a precedent with going over after the board invested as much time and effort in the creating the ordinance. And then the second thing, as it's a practical matter, I'm not sure the message is really gonna get out because the temporary signs, which we really don't like, we know when St. Mary's is going to have a festival because it's there, and it never changes because the sign is simply a placard. So, that's the dilemma I personally have. And I'm open to allowing an LED because it does seem to be a nice sign, and all the other stuff is good, but as to concerns, it's, you know, what I, what I said.
And it looks like what, what's provided in the planner's report, you're talking about the LED surface being roughly 10, 10 feet wide by just short of six feet height, right? And that's how we're getting the 60. I, I don't know. I mean, I think you could trim it a little bit, but I don't think it's gonna markedly make a difference. I mean, even if you added, took a foot off the top, you're talking...
Well, I guess, I'm, I think that's a valid question, though. I mean, I'm sure you had some, you know, committee involved in the design, working with the sign company. What was the thought about not having some kind of a permanent type signage band maybe at the bottom with, you know, some hours or whatever you felt needs to be permanent? And then, I, I, you know, the, I mean, that's a valid point as opposed to the whole thing being changeable. I mean, what was your thinking on that?
Well, because you'll find that throughout the year that hours change.
Well, understood.
And when you have a static sign, of course, then you got an expense of them going in and...
Right.
A whole sign face.
All right.
And getting rid of the old marquees that everybody used to change letters on is the reason we go in with the electronic sign.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, and the reality is, I mean, the, the speed limit is what? 35, 45 on Route 59?
And this sign is actually capable of, you know, they want to put a static message on the bottom for a certain time, telling their hours. They can put it up there.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, they can do it on the message center.
So, they can have kind of a static section and then have a section that maybe it changes? The whole thing doesn't have to change all the time, I guess, is my question.
Most of the time, they do.
Yeah.
Other comments?
And the biggest thing is this because of all the setbacks that we have there on 59, and that's why we need to be the size we are, so. And the biggest thing is this because of all the setbacks that we have there on 59, and that's why we need to be the size we are, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, one last thing. I mean, I've talked to a lot of the parishioners at St. Mary's and it seemed like the consensus was, you know, why aren't we putting it on the north side of the entrance drive? It seemed like, you know, it's more centrally located. You know, it's a shame that IDOT owns that property and we can't do that. And I know one of the residents even voiced their concern on that. So you did talk to IDOT to see if there's an opportunity? I know that's-
Uh, someone did. I, I didn't personally, but someone did talk to IDOT.
You did?
Yeah, I, I did reach out to IDOT in regards to a couple possibilities. And one was to basically make it a straight line all the way across, which would help us to, you know, alleviate some of that problems. And then, and another was just to see if we could, you know, encroach. And which, I kind of figured the answer on that one, but-
Yeah, but I mean, we could, they could do a plat of highway or something like that. Dedicate, rededicate it back to St. Mary's.
Did not, yeah, it did not fly as far as that request was concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it, it's obviously is a big investment for St. Mary's. And we want to make sure it's in the right location for the parish and get the most visibility and all that and-
I did speak to them in regards to the landscaping, which they put in basically on behalf of the church. It wasn't necessarily IDOT putting bushes up and down Route 59 when they did do that. So I did ask them if, you know, removing some of those for visibility in sightlines. And they didn't say one way or the other whether it was bad or good, so.
You don't have any photos, do you, looking at this area or no?
I'm sorry?
Photos looking at this area?
Uh, sorry.
That would help, yeah. Okay. Oh, that helps a lot, all right. So now we're talking the upper photo, just essentially kind of to the right of that hole, and there's that first bush there somewhere in that area, I suppose. Okay.
Thank you.
So you're saying that, that those, those trees there were put in by IDOT? And they didn't necessarily have an issue with those being reworked a little bit or?
Right, and if, if they were in need of replacing, we talked to the church, they said that they would add, they could add landscaping outside of the view.
Well, something low, you'd want to put something low, maybe around the base of the sign that would stay low, you know.
And they were, they were amenable to that, to that request. Obviously, the village staff could work with them and, you know, approve any sort of plannings that they would be proposing.
And the chair would entertain a motion regarding this case?
I move we adopt the findings of fact of staff as the findings of fact of the zoning board of appeals and recommend approval of a variance to permit a ground monument sign of up to sixteen feet, four inches in height with an electronic animated sign face of up to sixty square feet in sign area for St. Mary's Immaculate Parish at 15629 South Route 59.
Second. We're going to need a second to take a vote on it, gentlemen.
I can second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can we please get a vote by roll call, please?
Commissioner Menace? Commissioner Heinem?
Yes.
Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Mr. Sagerbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Chairman Kiefer?
Yes.
Okay, this motion carries. This will, recommendation will go forward to the village board. Please be in touch with staff. They'll let you know what date that will appear before them. Work with your project. That concludes our business for the zoning board. We're going to move directly into the plan commission meeting. Previously, we had a case before us under new business. It was case number 1731-072816.SU. The applicant was Centerpoint Church and it was a special use request. That case has since been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not be taking action on that. So we'll move forward from that. That would conclude the plan commission's meeting. Do we have anything open for discussion for anything that's not on our agenda this evening?
Well, just briefly, I would like to explain my no vote. Just simply, I can't go to the sixty square feet variance that I also understand mathematics, so I know that it would carry. And so I'm figuring it's, with one no vote, the board will then look at it and they will make the informed decision because we are, after all, only advisory to the board.
And with the technology available, they can probably have like a border around it where it's not the whole face.
And that's, yeah, and there was testimony on that. So I am more inclined, but I thought it would be best if my vote was no to have a five-one vote go rather than a six-o because that way hopefully the trustees will take some time to look at that. Which brings me, Jake, to the next question if I may. We had talked with Jonathan about a cover letter that would go with any recommendation. Basically, one that would be given to the trustees that would point out issues that were there as a substitute for the minutes because as you saw, we just approved the zoning meeting from September of 2015.
Yeah, they sometimes don't receive the minutes till after they meet.
Yeah.
Mr. Renzi's referencing is, there was discussion and I think support by everybody to have some sort of cover sheet that would have bullet points. So we would expect, our hope would be that our recommendation going forward to the, to the village board would include Commissioner Renzi's concern and that it would be noted when they're making their decision.
Okay.
That way they would have both the five-one vote and the bullet points so they would know. Oh, okay, yeah, we, it makes sense because again, the road is hi- higher. So, okay, that's why the one variant, it's set back a little. Okay, that's why there's another variant. But why did they go to sixty? Oh, wait a minute, advances in technology, they've said that they can go this and then they can make a decision. And if it's approval, that's fine. If it's not approval, well, that's fine, I guess, too. Hopefully, it will be approval, but I'm looking to, for guidance from them. And so that way, they can have whatever questions they want of the applicant.
Thank you. Any other issues brought up? Okay, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September 6th at seven o'clock. This meeting at 7:36 is adjourned. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.